We have eight o'clock.
Okay, it's eight o'clock and Schaefer may show up, we'll just have to see. We have a roll call, please.
Dr. Brad Eccles.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Ullul.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry, Vice President Arlene Schaefer, President Mike Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Um. Public comments, this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak. Matters not on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? If you would approach the microphone, sir, give us your name and city. Like we don't know.
Barry Freeland, Costa Mesa. Some of you may recall, in November twenty twenty-two, I had an issue with CRNR. In summary, my neighbor parked his car next to my trash cans and the trash truck could not grab it without possibly damaging his car. The driver got out of his car and put a yellow tag on it and drove off. The amount of effort to move the trash can a few inches was trivial, but he preferred to educate me instead of providing good customer service. The next day I contacted CRNR and requested they return to pick up my trash. They promised me they would return and pick it up that day. Four days later, a Tuesday, the trash can was still not picked up, so I called again. The customer service representative said he would try to get someone out that day. Nobody came. As a result, and out of frustration, I decided to produce a video about my experience and posted on YouTube. The point was to educate the public about the poor quality of customer service at CRNR and hopefully embarrass enough people to get them to change their ways. I also sent copies to some of you on this dais. And CNR management. So far, the video has been seen over two thousand times by people all over Costa Mesa. I hope my task was complete and this would not happen again. Unfortunately, not so. Last week, my trash day fell on July fourth, so pickup was moved to the next day, a Friday. I did not want to leave out my cans overnight and planned on putting them out in the morning, well, I forgot. The trash truck was early, I missed the pickup. I take full responsibility. Both cans were one hundred percent full, so I decided to call CRNR and request a missed pickup. I was told the truck would pick them up the following Monday. On Monday, nobody arrived, so I called and they said they would pick them up on Tuesday. Nobody arrived on Tuesday. On Wednesday, I called and requested to speak to a supervisor. Mr. Samuel got on the phone and told me, I told him my story. He said, this is not supposed to happen, and he said he would get back to me with an explanation. I said I would send him a link to my twenty twenty-two video and that I want to understand why this keeps happening. I asked to understand the root causes of the problem. I also said, don't bother picking up my trash as it would be picked up with everyone else's tomorrow. A few hours later, at four twenty-five PM, a truck pulled up in front of my house and picked up the trash. My first thought, this was only happening because I complained to a supervisor. But I believe the real reason the CNR wants cover to say they picked up my cans. Problem is, an entire week passed, the value of the pickup one day before the normal pickup day was pointless, a waste of time, resources, and fuel. On Thursday, the trash truck drove down my street and emptied everyone's trash, as it should, including mine, which only had a few things in it. On Friday, I called Samuel back and reminded him of our conversation and I still wanted answers. He said the management team was reviewing my case and someone would get back to me. So far, nobody's contacted me. I firmly believe CNR takes for granted their customers with this irresponsible behavior. Only a company with a complete immunity from the consequences of their actions would treat customers in this manner. I would prefer CNR say, if you miss your pickup, then you have to wait a week. We don't have the manpower to pick up missed trash. That is the honest approach. That is a smart approach. This would encourage people to find other solutions. Their current policy of making false promises to placate the customer is a lie. It creates distrust, it creates frustration. If anyone from the CRNR management team decides to give me the courtesy of a phone call, I will be happy to share it with you and what I learned, but I would prefer if one of you take this on. You could use your power of the purse and control of their evergreen contract to educate them that this behavior is not acceptable and there are consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Question, um. Does that, that incident with Mr. Freeland get reported to us?
Yes, well, they sent us a report of missed collections, I think, on a monthly basis, but really to, to address, it's an unfortunate incident, what happened on this, Mr. Freeman, and what we'd recommend is that if they're getting a runaround from CNR to call us, you know, or email us, because then we'll immediately get on the phone and we'll, we'll stay on top of it, making sure it's resolved, because we'll call, we'll call back like with the next day or a couple hours and say, hey, has this been resolved yet? So that's, that's one of the benefits of having a exclusive franchise with us that if they're not getting the customer service or satisfaction, we'll make sure that happens. So I'm gonna, after today's meeting, I'm gonna follow up with CRNR and find out what, why was his trash cart missed? And, and have someone respond to him and get the answers that he's looking for.
And how does that tie to our liquidated damages?
We, we, we would, you know, go, go onto our list, we document that, and then at the end of the year, we'll, we'll calculate how many missed collections did they miss, and if it was over their limits, then, then we apply it, yes.
So we do have some control finance.
Yes, yes, yes. Right.
Okay, if you would, follow up, Barry, after your.
Yes. Yes, I will do that.
Thank you for coming, sir.
And just one, one follow-up, just, yeah. Barry, just make sure, not just the one or two, the various issues are directed at us and, and our general managers so that it can be reported properly for those.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
I would have loved to have just followed you guys directly, but the process seems to be to call them. You called the phone number, they, through their menu system, one of the options is missed trash collection, push, push number two or whatever. So, I, I'm not sure if, if the public knows we're supposed, we should contact you guys directly.
Yeah, that's the best way to help us is, is through our email, our, our email, because, because we get that twenty-four seven. And so, uh, once we get that, then we, then now we have written documentation as well. So that's the best way is, is through the email process. Just email me.
And I'll do that.
Okay.
I don't do this too often, I've done it twice in thirty-five years, so.
Yeah, understood.
Found it very frustrating. I have plenty of video and audio, they say they record all phone calls, well, so do I. Uh, they do it for quality control, so do I. And I have not put together another video, it takes a lot of time, effort, energy, and I, that's why I decided to come here today, to see if I can affect a change, that's my only purpose. Trash collection seems to be working great, otherwise, it's just seems like this is a problem. And, and I'm not the only one.
Are you a Thursday service day? Yeah, you're same as me. You're not shy about letting us know too, and I would still encourage, please don't stop doing that, let, you know, if you, if you get to that level and I'm it's, it's not, don't, don't hesitate to let us know.
All right, thank you for you guys and for all your service.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to items of study and get our code enforcement report for June. David?
Morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. Uh, this is my month of June's, uh, report. The report summarizes three major points of enforcement. It's going to be scavenging graffiti and trash carts left within public view. In the month of June, the district saw numerous complaints with code enforcement staff regarding scavenging activity in the city. Um, with most scavenging complaints, they were, they occur in the early morning hours. Um, I'm in the field by six thirty AM. The month of June, I made contact with two scavengers depicted by the streets following State Avenue in Lexington, Lexington Lane. Um, was a slower month for me this month, I was, uh, doing some classes for, uh, my code enforcement certification, so I completed another module. Um. Trash container enforcement. Um, I found a number, seventy-three trash carts were out. Um. Uh, basically left a violation notice at, at the different locations listed below. Any questions on that?
Questions for David? Lower than normal.
Yes, sir. I was in an, uh, the, the module three academy for my code enforcement certification. That was a three-week academy.
After a week?
Basically.
Hey, any quick, go ahead. Uh, just, uh, two, but on Lexington, uh, you said it's citable offense and discontinued activity, unlike some, most of yours usually it says they left without incident, was there any issues on Lexington?
No.
Okay.
Uh, it's just, it's been, you know, a few different individuals that I'll, again, it's the Monticello community. Um, a lot of different points of access in there, so.
Got it. And how many more modules do you have?
I have one more to be certified.
Get a badge and everything?
Uh, no, it's just, you know, through.
You deserve a badge.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And, and if I could get the gentleman's address, maybe I could follow up in the field, you know, as far as, you know, making sure that everything's taken care of. Um, I'm out in the mornings and so, yeah, I mean, if there's any way I could help you in your situation, not a problem.
Thank you for that.
For all.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, David. All right. Postcards.
Yes. Um, just real quick reports to you, Mr. President and Board, as, as you know, CRNR is, is mailing out postcards to all the customers, uh, seeking input from them as, as far as the, the size carts they, they request, they would like to receive. Um, as to date, uh, CNR received five thousand one hundred and twenty-eight responses back from our customers, uh, submitting their requests, so, um, they are continuing receiving, uh, these requests both electronically and mailed on a continual basis, so we will continue updating the board and how many they receive, so right now it's over five thousand.
Remind me if they don't return a postcard, they just get a blue, the new blue one, and we're not doing anything else, correct?
Any card, correct, yeah.
Uh, I've had questions on people, a couple of questions. People who want to get rid of stuff early, in other words, they have bins they're not going to be using, do they still bottle it? Just call.
Yes.
Say, hey, I'm, I want these gone.
Yeah, they just call them and, and they'll pick them up probably the, the day of their collection.
CRNR sending out the reminder about the meetings that we're going to be having in August and September, or is that us?
That's, that's us, we did, yeah.
We received like two of those last week or so.
Yes.
If we're getting worth.
I said about it, right?
Scott, I have a question, um, or comment. Uh, we, we got our card and, um, now I showed it to my wife and, uh, she said it was confusing. Um. Has CRNR? Are they recording or are they getting? Um. Um, they, they must be getting questions on, you know, on the card. Um. Yeah, are, are they responsible for reporting that data to the sanitary district? I mean, I mean.
As far as, as far as questions to receiving from the public?
Questions that, there, the, the, the public that's not understanding the, the card, um, in, in, you know, in total.
Yes, we, we meet, we, we're meeting on a regular basis with CRNR on the, on the roll-up, um, program, and when we have those meetings, they give us updates uh, on what, um, comments or feedback they're, they're getting back from their residents. Yes.
And, 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 and just, just for information, we have, uh, what, twenty-three thousand residences? So five thousand have responded and, and there's a certain number that don't have to respond, um. And, 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 uh, is there, is, is there data on um, what the responses are, those five thousand responses?
No, no, we don't have that yet.
Okay. I, I would appreciate getting it sometime, probably before the town halls, you know, so that, so we can appropriately, um, uh, take care of any, any concerns, if any.
Yes, that's the plan.
Yeah, okay.
One question about the card from CRNR. They still don't state that you can get two thirty-five, two thirty-five gallon containers, that they just said you can only get one of each.
Okay. Yeah.
I told them that at a, a meeting that we have at our complex, but.
We'll remind them.
Thirty-five, so you get two, you know.
Right. Good point, yes.
Issue condos and.
Yeah, exactly.
Folks that have, have, I mean, we got a certain amount of people that are getting two new carts, condos, they're all getting two new carts.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, um. World Traveler, you're next.
Yes, thank you, I'll put up a PowerPoint presentation here for you, real quick. All right. So, as most of you are, are aware, we, we do, the CMSD does participate in, in the YCIL program, which stands for the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative Program, and that is where young, um, young professionals from Southeast Asia, from like Thailand, Vietnam, Cambodia, Laos, Philippines, Malaysia, uh, they are, are, are connected with a, a host agency here in the United States, and, uh, that YCIL fellow, uh, learns, uh, best practices of. Okay, sorry. Sure, so, um, they, they share, uh, the hosties share best practices with, with the fellows, so they can take that information back uh, to their home country and hopefully, uh, implement what they've learned here. Um, the great thing about the, the YCIL program is that there is a reciprocal exchange component to the program, so the fellows, they submit a, a project, uh, to, to the State Department, and if their project is, is approved, then the host agency can go visit their country, and it's, and it is fully funded, um, by the, um, next slide, please, by the, um, US, uh, State Department of the State. Um, fortunately for us, um, one of our, our fellows from last year, we had two fellows last year, we had, uh, Jasmine Tudor from the Philippines and Qua Nguyen from Vietnam, uh, Qua's, um, application was approved, uh, and so that, uh, allowed, uh, me to go visit, um, uh, him in Vietnam for approximately eleven days. And so, if, the next slide. So I did arrive, uh, in Hanoi on, on June twenty-eighth. Um, a little bit about Hanoi, that, that is the, the capital of, of Vietnam. It is, is a quite large city, um, about the size of New York, New York City, over eight half million people. Uh, it is still the second largest city in Vietnam, uh, thirteen hundred square miles. Uh, it's very traditional, uh, very, um, conservative, you see a lot of Chinese and French influences in, in Hanoi. Um, some describe it as, as, uh, one of the most fascinating cities in Southeast Asia. Um, next slide, so, uh, when I arrived in, in Hanoi, didn't have any time to rest, within a couple hours, I was off to a meeting. Um, um, and this was a meeting in, in Hanoi, um, and it was with, the, next slide, please. It was with the Institute of Strategy and Policy on Natural Resources and Environment. They are consulting firms and they, they do, they give it policy advice to the Ministry of Environment and Natural Resources of Vietnam. And so they, they are struggling on, on, on finding, um, uh, sustainability programs, recycling programs, more efficient ways to, to collect trash, and I'll, I'll explain later in my presentation how the current system on how they collect trash, and you'll see it's very, it's extremely very, very labor-intensive. Um, just picture me of the group. Um, and then, um, the next day was more, it was a Saturday, so that was an opportunity for me to, to visit what, uh, sightseeing of, of Hanoi, and you can see these, uh, some of the, the tree-lined streets in here in Hanoi. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is the, um, Saint Joseph Cathedral, which was, uh, built in the nineteenth century. Um, it's one of the first structures built, uh, by the colonial, colonial government of the French Indochina when, when the, the French occupied, uh, Indochina. Um, it opened in eighteen eighty-six and is considered the oldest, oldest church. What's unique, what, what, what I found, what happened in unique in Hanoi, if you go to the next slide, is that as I was getting my picture taken there, I had this couple come up to me and just say, hey, can we take a picture with you? And what I found, yeah, what I found is that they, they don't see tall Caucasian people in, in Hanoi very, very often. Um, and, and, uh, so that was, that was quite unique, in fact, you'll, you'll see some more of this later if you go, go to the next slide. So, um, it's very hot, very, very hu- humid, um, uh, this is, uh, Qua and I having a, um, uh, a Beng May sandwich there, and this is like at eight o'clock in the morning and we're already just sweating bullets, it's so freaking hot there. Um, on the picture on the right, uh, it looks like those are little donut holes, but there, I don't know what they are, but they have like a cream filling inside of it, really, really, really good. I don't know what they call them, but it was very tasty, so that, she, she was just walking around, um, selling, um, the, these, uh, these pastries. Um, then went to the Ho Chi Minh, um, Mausoleum, um, this is where their, uh, famous leader is currently, um, um, resides, I guess you could say, um, but, uh, um, this was built in nineteen seventy-five, uh, it was inspired by the Lin- Linhens, uh, Mausoleum in Moscow, but, uh, it has distinct, uh, architectural elements like the, the, the sloping roofs on the top. Um, you can, uh, also, this is not open to the public, I guess during, during special ceremonies, you can go see, um, President Ho Chi Minh, who's embalmed in this, uh, uh, mausoleum, you can see him in a, um, uh, protected, um, uh, glass case, uh, there. Um, it's not open to the public, but I guess during special occasions, you can, you can, uh, see him in, in here. Uh, but it is, um, always guarded by, um, a military honor guard. And then across, across the, um, way was this, uh, National Assembly Conference, and you can vaguely see there's, um, some soldiers in white uniforms and black cars, so apparently there was some kind of meeting going on there. We tried to walk across that, that lawn there, we were quickly shoot away, said, get away, can't, they didn't want anyone come close to this building. It was all blocked off, so there was having some kind of important meeting there, which was quite interesting. Um, next slide, this is the Imperial Citadel, um, this was built on, in the eleventh century by the, the Ly Viet Dynasty, which was the first stable Vietnamese dynasty lasting, uh, a couple hundred years. Um, it was also, um, uh, constructed on remains of a Chinese fortress dating back to the seventh, seventh century, so it goes way back. Uh, I learned that this was the administrative capital and headquarters of the North Vietnamese Ministry of Defense and Army during the Vietnam War. And again, um, the next slide, so what I think, this was on top of the citadel. The picture on the left was taken in nineteen fifty-four, and that's what we're looking at on the right. Um, so that's what, that was, looks like back then, but ironically, if you go to the next picture, next slide. So, uh, when I was up there on the citadel, I hear, I hear this voice, so, so, you know, this little voice go, uh, how are you? We know, where are you from? How do you like Hanoi? And it was these two little girls, uh, in the hats, just kind of approached me and started talking English, and they just wanted to practice their English and ask me all kinds of questions. Um, and it, it, ironically, I find that, that, the, um, young children, Vietnamese children, they want to practice their English, because when I was at, on the right there is the, um, Ho Chi Minh's, um, uh, museum. When I was at the museum, I saw a little boy talking to another American and just kind of conversations, they like, they, they, they're not afraid approaching, um, uh, tourists and asking questions, I thought it was quite, quite unique, so, yeah, that was really cute, the really cute girls, um, just asking a bunch of questions, interesting and curious. Uh, next slide. So this was, um, had dinner here, what's, what's famous about this, this place is this is where Obama had, had, had dinner there, and the owner was milking it every minute, I mean, there was pictures of Obama everywhere in this place. No. Hey, I'm not that old, man, I don't buy my grades, my hair's not that gray. My hair is gray, but not that gray, but, but, uh, so that was the, the famous about this, uh, this eateries that, that Qua took me there, so that's where, um, again, um, just everywhere, talk about Obama, yeah, having, uh, having, um, dinner, so that was, that was unique. Um. So next slide, so after, so again, I only spent about day and a half in Hanoi, then I went off to, um, Deloitte, it's about two hour flight. Uh, this was Qua's hometown, uh, and, and it's called, it's known as the, uh, City of Eternal Springs. Uh, the, the temperature is, is so much different than the rest of Vietnam, as you can see, it's averages between fifty-seven and seventy-three degrees. This is where the Vietnamese go to get away from the heat. Um, it was the one day of the, uh, of my trip, and I actually had to wear a jacket because it was so, it was cold there, uh, it was quite, quite, uh, unique. Um, go to the next slide, oh, so again, this is again, my fan group, my fans. Um, again, I'm in, I'm in the airport at Hanoi, ready to go to Deloitte, and these two little girls just quickly made eye contact with me and just kept coming around and giving me hugs, just for no reason, and I don't know why, they just kept on hugging, so that's the mom, and they wanted me to take pictures of them, so they're, they're, and they were on my flight to Deloitte.
Maybe they thought you were Obama.
I don't know, man, they just, I don't know what it was about you, but they just, they immediately just gravitated to her, towards me. Um, and then we're on the, um, uh, uh, getting ready to board the plane, there was, uh, another, uh, an older woman in front of me, and she was talking to her son in Vietnamese, and, and Qua can notice they were talking about me, um, because I guess, I guess, again, my height, and she just took a selfie of me with her, you know, just, just, they don't see a lot of, Qua said, they don't see a lot of, uh, Caucasian tourists in Hanoi or Deloitte, so that was quite unique for them.
Wait, 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 so the picture on the right, you notice anything funny in that picture?
Yeah, there's Starbucks in the back.
Starbucks.
Yeah, there's a lot of Starbucks there, coffee places everywhere, there was, there was Starbucks, and there was also, um, uh, coffee bean and leaf, uh, tea leaf, there was, that was there as well. But they also had a lot of, um, Vietnamese coffee shops, there's just every corner was coffee shops.
Kentucky Fried Chickens?
Did not see that, no, I did see there was some McDonald's, but that was about it, yeah, yeah. Um, so again, if you go to the next picture, so this is a little bit of Deloitte, you can see it has this nice beautiful lake there. Um, uh, next picture, then in the center of the town, it has this nice, uh, fountain, uh, with this, uh, uh, muriel of, of, uh, trees, you know, it's, it's really neat. So I did, uh, I did, it was not all fun, I did have some business, I did go to, um, a wastewater treatment plant there. Um, it, it's not as advanced as our, our treatment plant here in Orange County, but it is better than most countries in Southeast Asia. It does have a, a wastewater treatment plant that, uh, it serves, uh, over, uh, thirteen thousand homes. Uh, they have fifty-one miles of sewer pipes, seven pump stations, and it, it treats about three point two million gallons per day, so, um, just some pictures of, of, of the, the treatment plants, just, again, it's just very, very standard wastewater treatment plant, but, um, go to the next slide, so you see the, the, um, secondary treatment on the right, um, next slide. Again, this is just, um, uh, some sludge, they have no idea what to do with this, so it just sits there. Um, this is their disinfection tank, and then next slide, um, this is where, when it's done, when it's, when it's filtered, it goes into this riverbank, and, uh, I have no idea where it leads to, but, um, that's, um, pretty much their, their treatment plant. Oh, and this is their, their backer truck, which I'm sure our guys are greatly appreciative, they don't have this kind of truck used to clean. Uh, but on, on the right is there, is like their, is it, would be their jetting hose, as you can see, it's quite small, but, uh, there, that's their, that's their, their cleaning truck, um, quite outdated. And so one of the, um, uh, nice feature that I, I had at, at Deloitte is that I was actually had a, a really tr- traditional home-cooked Vietnamese meal. Uh, this was in, um, the picture on the right was, is Qua's ants. Um, and you can see, um, uh, the, on the left is how mountainous is up there in Deloitte, why it's very cool. Um, so, go to the next slide, um, so they, they, they made me the traditional Vietnamese crepe, um, which is a crispy rice flour with turmeric powder that makes it yellow. Uh, usually they fill it with, uh, pork, shrimp, vegetables, and, and bean sprouts, and then if you go to the next slide, you, you would dip it in, um, the, the Nuroch Cham sauce, which is, uh, uh, you know, fish sauce with water, sugar, and citrus, which is very sweet. So you dip it in that and it's really tasty. In addition, um, jackfruit, they gave us a jackfruit, is a big, very large, a tree fruit, um, uh, that, that we have for dessert. Um, and then another, another unique, um, um, it was mangosting, you heard that? I, I've seen, I've never had that before, so, yeah, so very popular in Asia, um, it looks like a marshmallow, but it's, it's just a very sweet, uh, 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 fruit. Uh, what's, it does have a seed in the middle there, so, uh, but it's really good, very good. Um, so again, this picture of his grandma, um, and that's his, um, his cousin, so I was practicing English with her. Um, so again, this is you with my jacket on, I said, that's when, again, it was, it was very cold. Um, and then next slide is, um, is, is family, um, so. And then, and then what they have there, um, in the center, they have a farmer's market, you can see all the people in the background, I mean, thousands of people, it's just a big sense of community where they all come together, just, you know, shop, buying flowers and food, and it's just a big, big social gathering that they have there in Deloitte. So a big, big, uh, sense of community there.
So on the right, you were shopping for things to, for your tummy?
Uh, on the right, yeah, actually it was more, more Qua was actually shopping there, so I was just, that was, I think, one of, she used to be his teacher. Um, and so, um, and now she owns this, this market there, so. And then on the picture on the left, that's what part of his, his family, that's his dad's side of the family. Then the right is, uh, again, coffee shops everywhere, so that was Qua's, uh, one of his, his friends, uh, owns a coffee shop there, so, um, getting coffees everywhere in, in, um, Vietnam. So, so this is one way how they, they collect their trash, uh, basically, they're, they're, they have no trash cans, uh, the rest of, they just put, basically put their trash out in the curb, and then they roll these little dumpsters, they, they, they pick them up manually, put them in. And then they roll these little dumpsters. They, they, they pick them up manually, put them in these dumpsters and then, and then a back loader truck comes in and they dump it in, in the trash truck and very extremely labor intensive, um, there in, in, um, Vietnam. Um, then from there, uh, went on to Ho Chi Minh City, uh, which is formerly Saigon, uh, got there on July second. Now this is the largest city in, um, Vietnam, over nine and a half million people. Um, it, it, Saigon was originally the capital of the French Indonesia. Um, and then, you know, then, uh, uh, station in nineteen fifty-four, um, uh, we're right on the, uh, you'll see in the picture later, but my hotel is right on the, uh, Saigon River, uh, where the port Saigon is among the busiest container ports in Southeast Asia. So one, the first thing we did, um, as you know, the Heineken has a brewery there, uh, one of the largest breweries there, um, uh, and, um, the, the person in the middle is Qua's friend. He, he's one of the managers there. Uh, and so, uh, what I found was very fascinating is, is that they do have a very, uh, successful sustainability program, which they call Brew, Brew a Better Vietnam. Um, and if you go, uh, a little bit about Heineken in Vietnam, that they arrived there in nineteen ninety-one, uh, they have six breweries there. Now I heard that they are closing one of them down or at least shutting one down because they get hurt sales are, are down Vietnam. But they have over three thousand employees. Uh, they, they brew a hundred thirty-two million gallons of beer a year. They also own Tiger Beer, uh, which is very popular in, in, in Southeast Asia. And their goal is to reach net zero emissions across entire value chain by twenty forty, which supports the national agenda, which I'll talk a little about, uh, later, but there, they, they established a, a, a strategy to achieving net zero by twenty fifty. And again, uh, what Heineken does is really remarkable as far as sustainability. They, they, they have their own, um, they have zero waste of the landfills. Um, all their bottles are, are re- are, are returning, reused up to thirty percent or at least ninety percent of the bottles are. The crates where they hold their bottles, those are, those are reused, uh, with five to ten year lifespan. Uh, they have their own wastewater treatment plant on their property. And so they, they treat, uh, a hundred percent of their wastewater. Um, they also purify their own water, right? Because you can't drink the tap water in Vietnam. So they have to purify their own water. And any kind of water they reuse, they put it back into the environment. Uh, they have, uh, they use nitric acid, renewable energy. Um, they reduce their carbon emissions, just really impressive. Um, um, achievements under sustainability. But I also, so what I also found incredible, so I'm, I'm walking around the show around them and the, on, on the two floors and there's just beer everywhere, right? And, and beer in the, in the, the break room and just beer. And I go, so you could just have a beer anytime you want? Yeah, pretty much. Okay, that'd be pretty difficult. Yeah, right. Wow, that'd be pretty difficult to work. Yeah. So that was interesting. So, so the next, uh, I, I think the highlight of my, my trip really is, is, is doing a presentation at the American Center at the, uh, 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 United States, uh, Council in general. I was, when I was in Hanoi, um, I was supposed to go to the, to the, um, um, uh, embassy, but my, my, as you, as you recall, my, my visa got mixed up a little bit. So unfortunately I wasn't able to go to the, the embassy in Hanoi, but this was, this was great, fantastic. So, um, you go to the next slide. I was able to, um, give, um, a, a presentation about Costa Rica Sanitary District, about all sustainability programs that we do here. And we feel the next slide, pretty, pretty good sized crowd. You know, it's about, I was close to, I would say close to a hundred people were there. Uh, they're very, uh, very enthusiastic to learn about our best practices here in, in the United States. Um, again, here's just some pictures. Uh, this was an opportunity. I gave away some more swag. So, uh, in my presentation, I'd have a, I'd ask a question to see if they were paying attention of what I was presenting and they, they all, they all got it. They were all spot on. They were paying attention. In fact, Qua says a lot of times it's very common. Uh, if they're bored with the presentation, they'll just walk up and, and leave. No one walked up and got out of my presentation. So I was kind of pleased with that. So they were very, very tuned, very, very, um, uh, um, um, inspired or, or just really, really listening to what, what I was saying. So.
Notice you had a, a picture of the board of directors.
I did. Yes, I did. I, and, and when I, well.
The post office in Hanoi.
Well, but when I explained to them, you know, and I explained to everybody, hey, most people in their lives are gonna have one bosses in their, in their life, right? You have one boss. Well, I have five and they're all like, what? You have five bosses? How do you do that? Right? So.
They don't even know us.
So, um, in the next slide, um, then, you know, a nice little picture there. So, um, and then after this, a lot of one-on-one pictures, um, with them. So it was, that was, it was really, uh, yeah, I really, this was the best. Um, and then, and then again, in that day, uh, went to, um, what's called Remit University. Um, this is, this is really where a lot of the privileged Vietnamese kids went to, went to school. Uh, it is, uh, an Australian institute, which I thought was fascinating. Uh, arrived there at, uh, in the year two thousand and they provide all types of, of degrees in, in businesses, technology, communication, designs, fashion and languages. Good size university of twelve thousand students and the tuition is about fourteen thousand dollars a year, which is not bad for, I think for our standards, but I think the opposite is very high end on, on, on them for in Vietnam. Um, uh, they all, um, uh, so we did, um, a conference next slide there on, on sustainability, uh, and all these kids spoke very good English. I mean, very limited accent. I mean, very sharp kids. Um, um, very eager and, and enthusiastic about sustainability programs. So talked about again, CMSD programs, what we do here. Um, next slide. And then we had a little, um, Q and A part. What I found fascinating on the picture on the right is that at campus, they're, they're source separating the recyclables. And I said, and I, and I told them, if we did that here, they'd probably, they'd probably kill me, you know, because it's all about convenience. And I was telling them, you know, if you really want to have a successful, um, a recycle probably, you gotta make it convenient and, and have a source separating. It's just not convenient. And, and also it makes, they said that when they collect it, they, they, they commingle it anyway. So what's the purpose of source separating? Make no sense, right? And so I was telling you, you gotta, you gotta make it convenient for them. So, but thought that was fascinating, but, but at least, at least they're, they're, they're trying. So they're doing something about it. Um, and then, um, the sky, Zion Sky Lounge dining, this was, um, a, 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 a top nightclub in, in Vietnam that, that Quan knows, the, the owner and the, and the manager. Um, they wanted me to do a, 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 a half day session with the next, about, uh, leadership, um, and how to, um, um, uh, resolve conflict. Um, these are, these are, these are the leaders of the, um, nightclub. And you see how young they are, extremely young. I mean, they're like my, my kids age and they're, they're managing, leading people. Uh, but very, very sharp group, um, uh, uh, and very, very nice upscale, um, nightclub in, in, in Vietnam. So again, this is just kind of.
Yeah.
No, no, not like that. Not like that. Uh, so again, this is just a, uh, demonstration of their, um, how they collect trash. Again, they put it in those, those, on the picture on the left, they put in those, those, they just, they just threw their trash on the ground and then it just pushes those carts, picks them up off the ground, puts them in those carts and they put them in the, on those back loader, uh, trucks. Uh, again, very extremely labor intensive. That's seems to be the way they, they pick up trash in, in, in Vietnam. Um, and then I did have some sites, some time to sites, um, uh, site touring in, in Vietnam. This is the Imperial Palace on the left. Uh, if you might recall, in, in the Vietnam war, you would see the tank busting through the gate, right?
The US Embassy.
No, it's, it's, it's the, that was, it was the Imperial Palace. This is where the, uh, Vietnamese, uh, South Vietnamese president and vice president lived. This is where they had their, um, there's a bunker in there. It's where they had the, uh, uh, strategies on the war tactics. Um, this was, um, uh, where they had, they bring in dignitaries. This was basically the South Vietnamese government. Uh, it was in the palace and that was a replica of the tank, uh, that, that broke through the gate and ended, uh, uh, the capturing of, of Saigon. Um, what I found interesting, um, uh, the next slide, is there was an American jet there. If you go to the next slide, um, you'll notice the, the American symbol and, and the Vietnam flag has crossed out. This was the only really anti-American symbol I saw in Vietnam. Other than that, everyone was extremely polite. Very courteous, no, no anti sentiment against me at all, nothing. This was the only thing I saw, uh, of it. Um, uh, and I was told by my tour guide that they cannot fly the South Vietnamese flag there. They would get arrested. You know, that is illegal to fly the South Vietnamese flag in, in Vietnam. Um, next slide. So, um, the picture on the left is on a balcony looking out towards the gate. Um, picture on the right, um, the, the, the palace was bombed by the North Vietnamese, um, uh, um, air force and those two circles, like, apparently that's where the bombs landed, um, uh, on the palace. Uh, and that is where they, that is common where they had a helicopter there where the, the president, the vice president would take off there at the palace. Next slide. So this was interesting. So that was my tour guide. His name is Dewey. Um, this was a, a place we had, we had, uh, lunch. I didn't show up, but, uh, there's a building across from this, from this building. And it's a very, it's a secret, I wouldn't say a secret, but not too many people know about it, but he showed this to me. So it's, it's just a regular house. But this is a house where they built a, a bunker underneath the building, on the building, and it's where they store the weapons for the Tet Offensive. So you know where they had the Tet Offensive in nineteen sixty-eight? So this is where the, they showed me the building where they store all the weapons there, which was fascinating. Um, so he just like opened up this, it was like a, a tile floor. And then you open up the floor and there, there was this look concrete bunker that they constructed down in there. It was, it was quite amazing. Uh, so then my last day there, um, was just, um, had some free time. So I just went on the, on the Saigon River. Um, you can see some of the, the unique architectural buildings in, in Saigon. The building on the right is my hotel. It's actually two hotels and one, um, the, the one with R is the Radisson. I stayed in the building on the left. Uh, I think it was called the Riverside, um, on Saigon. So it just, again, had a nice, nice view of, of Saigon River. Um, next slides. It didn't just, next slide are just some, some, um, there you go. It's just some, some, again, you can see it's very, very modern. It looks like kind of any kind of like American city. Um, next slide, the, the lot of, a lot of, uh, traffic on, on, on the boats, um, you know, with, um, um, the port, uh, the building on the right, uh, that's the tallest building in, 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 in Vietnam. Um, that's for my hotel room, um, uh, pool on the side, but it has a nice view of the downtown area with, um, the Saigon River. And, and then I had, I did meet Qua's parents. Uh, that's me having dinner with his, his parents. I had dinner, I had dinner with twice with his parents and I also met his, his, his sister, who's a doctor there in, in Vietnam. Uh, so that was my, my last day there in, in Vietnam. And then, um, so, so what did I learn, uh, from Vietnam? Obviously, uh, Vietnam does produce, uh, uh, quite a bit, quite a bit, a bit of, uh, waste, uh, twenty million tons of waste annually, uh, which is higher than the world's average. It puts Vietnam among the twenty largest waste producing countries in the world. So they do have their, their, their issues that they're trying to resolve. Um, seventy-six percent of their waste is buried in a landfill without treatment and they, and then they incinerate the rest. They also produce a lot of food waste, uh, and that's definitely for sure. I mean, there's, there's, there's eateries all, all over, uh, uh, Vietnam. Um, and they're ranked second in Asia Pacific terms of food waste, uh, with over eight thou- eight million tons of food waste e- every year. Um, next, next slide please. So they are trying to do something about this. Um, a couple of years ago, Vietnam did adopt a national climate change strategy to achieve, uh, net zero emissions by twenty fifty. And that strategy includes, you know, reducing their emissions by seventy percent, uh, phasing out coal, you know, uh, that, that is using more low emission technologies, uh, promoting electric vehicles. In fact, go to the next slide. Um, they do believe in manufacturing electric vehicle there in Vietnam. Uh, it's called the Benfast, um, which, um, it's supposed to be the most affordable electric car in the market. And I heard they're trying to break the United States market, but I haven't seen anything yet, but did see quite a few of these vehicles, uh, uh, out in the street. Um, so they are trying to promote electric vehicles. Uh, they're trying to accelerate their waste energy, uh, projects, um, and they're also, um, pivoting to, uh, wind and solar, um, energy as well. So my, my recommendation, go to the next slide. So, uh, it, to achieve, uh, waste reductions, these were my recommendations that I made to, to the Vietnamese is that, you know, they need to implement convenient recycling programs, uh, do not require source separating recycles as I, as I showed you at, at the university. Uh, develop a comprehensive public outreach campaign describing why it's important to reduce, reuse and recycle. They definitely need to invest, uh, in more efficient waste connection equipment. You know, they need to invest in sorting machines, uh, a MRF. You know, you saw the trucks that they, they all have, um, uh, backloaders. Maybe they need to, to invest in buying carts so they can put their trash in the carts and, and more efficient refuse trucks. Um, so they do, they need to invest in, in, if they're really serious about reducing their, their waste in Vietnam. Um, a, a quick, you know, reduce food waste, maybe to start a composting program. And then, and then also I, I, I really recommended that, you know, like here in California, where, which, what, that we are heavily regulated, but we do have laws making, making it mandatory to recycle. Something I suggested that, you know, their government needs to get more involved and, and pass laws to, to make recycling mandatory and apply penalties for those people who refuse to, to, to comply with the regulations. That's really, you really want to have change, that's, the government has to get involved. And right now I don't think the, the government is just kind of passive in this, in this issue. And so, so, um, it is a authoritarian type government. So, you know, will, will they pass laws? Who knows? But that's, that was my recommendation. Um, in conclusion, it, you know, Vietnam is a beautiful country, uh, obviously rich with history and culture, um, great, great, uh, food. Um, i- i- it's a land of contrast. You know, you have the traditional modern, uh, traditional, uh, conservative, uh, city like Hanoi, uh, and then you can go to a vibrant, um, uh, city of, of, um, uh, Saigon or Ho Chi Minh City. As I mentioned earlier, they're very polite. All the Vietnamese people are polite, respectful, helpful, extremely friendly. It's definitely, you know, if you're thinking about visiting Vietnam, I, I definitely recommend it. It's definitely a country worth visiting. So that concludes my presentation. So, so any questions I could ask?
I have a friend who just got back from China and Vietnam and he said, while he said that Vietnam is probably the most beautiful country.
It is.
Ever visit.
Yeah.
He travels a lot.
Yeah. It's just, it's just, uh, the humidity is something we're not quite used to here in California, you know?
At the beginning of the presentation, said the US Department of State funded this.
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, my, my association with ICMA, the International City Manag- Management Association. So they, they partner with, uh, uh, they get grant funded from the state, the state department. And, and, um, they partner with YCIL. So they, they'll, they'll, uh, even all the memberships and s- uh, seeking for host agencies. So it's look like, you know, something. Yeah, I, I, they, they have the YCIL program is twice a year. They have, uh, they, they host in the spring and the fall. Uh, I, I like, I, I like to try to stick in the fall. Um, I, I'm still thinking about if, if we're gonna do it this year. It, it is a lot of work and I do depend on, on staff to help me on this. Um, um, but it, it is, you know, they're here for four weeks. It does take some requirements. So I, I'm not sure I'm gonna do it this year, maybe next year, but I'm still trying to determine that yet. Yeah, thank you.
I think for next week's liaison meeting, take a couple of minutes, put that on the agenda. Our agenda. You don't need to do your whole presentation, but give them a couple of highlights.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, it'd be great. Yeah, no problem.
I have a que- question though. In all the pictures, all the Vietnamese people were going like this. Do you know, have you, did you notice that? Is that?
That was do this.
I, they were doing that too, but so many of them were giving the, we used to call the peace sign up.
Yeah.
Don't know why they did that.
No. Yeah.
Go ahead. So it's either peace or the Johnny Manziel showing me the money or they Manziel fans? I mean, I don't know. I don't know. Pretty good. Uh, so they thought you were an NBA basketball player, obviously.
Yeah, probably, obviously.
But, um, uh, you had mentioned some of your, your finding, your, what you learned and some of your recommendations. What's their public, uh, financial health over there? I mean, what? Uh, obviously they're a different government totalitarian and they probably will do whatever they want to do, but what's their financial health right now?
I don't know. I, I don't know what that is. I, no one, no one shared that. I honestly, I don't even know. They knew, you know, unless, unless you're in the government, then yourselves.
Look at the building. They didn't build those buildings. The Chinese built those buildings.
They, they still, they still control information over there in Vietnam. They really do. They do control the information. So I, I wouldn't be surprised. Most Vietnamese people have no idea what the budget is over there and what they're spending.
Because that's why I'd be curious. I was like, oh, great. Even if they wanted to make some of these good changes, can they afford to or maybe they can't?
I, I don't think, yeah, I, I, my, my, I don't think they can. They'd have to, they would need some outside investments. Um, uh, in fact, that, that the wastewater treatment plant I showed in Delat, that was funded, um, from, uh, another country. So, yeah, they would, they'll definitely need some, um, outside help.
Show me the money.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks Scott. Thanks for.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to go there. So thank you.
Um, under comment, closing comments, I get a email. I don't know if everybody else does from a group called Waste Advantage. It's like a bulletin. Yeah, I get it on my email. And there was an article last week, US Department of Energy announces fourteen million dollar, fourteen million dollars to increase domestic battery recycle. And it's an article about how the Department of Energy is trying to get batteries recycled and there's apparently grant money for programs that do that.
Is it alkaline batteries or is it like batteries for like cars? Yeah.
Regular batteries.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's something we want to look into to see if it'll.
Send it to me?
Hmm?
Can you send it to me?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll try. I'll let you look at this and you can send it to yourself. So, okay. Um, there's one other thing and I don't remember what it was. Doesn't matter. Anything else, Brett? Bob, anything?
Well, uh, Scott, do you have any information on when OCC Recycling Center is going to open? I, I think there was some tentative date in early August or?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to find that out and report, uh, at the joint, uh, Board CAC Joint Meeting next, next Monday. Hopefully I'll have some information to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and was, was everything in your Vietnam experience in English?
Y- yes, yes. Uh, if there was, if there was a communication, uh, issue, then I would use, uh, Google Translate and that's how we would communicate. But mo- most of the, most of the Vietnamese I, I, I spoke to, uh, had, uh, produced in English.
Yeah, because when I was in China, half the time was in Chinese and half the time was in English. Yeah, because when I was in China, half the time was in Chinese and half the time was in English, and it took a a long time to have a conversation.
Yeah, Google Translate is really, it was a good thing, it helps, yeah.
Complicate, you know, the young lady that cuts my hair is Vietnamese, and she still has reservations about going home. It's expensive for them to go, her family's still there, but she talked a lot about how it's still fairly oppressive. For the people who live there, I mean, they're gonna obviously give you a rosier picture as a a visitor, but you're still gonna get some of that overlap, I think. Good, all right, anything else, Art? All right, thank you guys for arranging the meeting a week later, appreciate it, glad you're home safe, Scott.
Thank you.
With that, we're adjourned.